6.8. Presentation on CDBG Economic Development Grants and Planned Facade Improvements Program. This is brought to us by our admin office, and it looks like we have our deputy CAO, Ben Rinkelmann, coming up with Community Development Services Jeff Lucas. Welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Yep. Slideshow. Good morning, Board. Ben Rinkelmann, Deputy County Administrative Officer, and I'm joined by Jeff Lucas, Principal at CDS, here to give an update on the existing Community Development Block Grant Program and then a proposed adjustment to it when the 2024 NOFA comes out in January. At least that's when we think it's going to come out. HCD sometimes operates on extended timeframes. Do you want to take it away?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. This is just a—
Microphone, microphone.
Oh, sorry.
This is just a brief update for the Board on what can be done with the CDBG funds. Eligible activities include community development, economic development, planning strategies. Under community development, code enforcement work, facade improvement programs, housing rehab, public improvements, public facilities, and public services. Under economic development, we currently have, for example, a microenterprise program where we provide direct technical assistance to startups and folks who are eligible for that program. It's a very active program. In fact, we're doing a workshop right now for it. Business assistance loans, those are like 1% fixed rate loans to local businesses that will create jobs or retain jobs. That's also been very active in the last couple of years. And then we haven't done one for Lake County for quite a while, and that's planning and strategies. For example, with that new housing coordinator, the county may consider doing a—applying for funds up to $250,000 to do a housing strategy. You may have other sources of funds that are available, but you can use these funds as well to develop a strategy to implement housing countywide.
I just want to quickly add how HCD has the program set up in these activity buckets. So what we're talking about today is primarily the economic development activity bucket. So one of those buckets is over the counter. So basically, if you check the boxes, you get the money. The other one's competitive. For the 2023 NOFA, about 80% of the funds was over the counter, and only 10% was competitive. So the county's going to go after the competitive, but we'll see what happens.
So the national objective for the program include setting up programs and operations that will assist low-income households and persons. That's the number-one priority and national objective. For a low-income to moderate-income household, an example would be for a family of four in Lake County. That family could not have made more than $83,800 annually, including all sources of income. And so there's quite a few folks eligible in our area that can benefit from these programs, and they do. This other national objective is to mitigate slums and blighted areas. An example of that would be with the—like a facade improvement program or code enforcement programs can also be fitted in—fit into those—that national objective. And then urgent need is something that they very seldom use at the state level. Even though these are federal funds, a state acts as a—I don't know what they act as. I can't think of the word right now, but they—the funds come from the feds to the state, and then they modify some of the requirements for the program. Urgent need, for example, was what we used for the water system on Cobb, for example. So they don't use it very often, but it is there occasionally for us. So we just wanted to let you know what we've been—what we've been doing, what the county's been doing with the business loan programs. That's three different grants that are still active right now. Two of them were from the CV period, what we call the COVID programs, as well as the regular CDBG program. You can see those are the loans that we've put out. It's been the last probably two-year period. The number of jobs that have been retained or generated through those loans. And the loans were to businesses throughout the county, so that we had loans in Upper Lake and the Lakeport area. We can't do county loans in the unincorporated areas of the cities of Clear Lake or Lakeport, but in that area, also the South County area, and then on the North Shore. So we were able to get loans throughout the county.
So those are three different grants.
Those are three different grants.
The oldest to newest?
Yes, CV1 was first, and then 2 and 3 came later, and then the CDBG program.
Okay.
The regular—
Right.
Yeah.
Because when we talked about this a few years ago, there was low—no-interest money pretty much everywhere, and also we were in the middle of COVID, and people didn't want to take on debt because it was so uncertain. And so it looks like you're having a lot more takers now that the economy's changed a little bit?
Yeah, the environment's changed a little bit. For examples, the idle program that was operated through the SBA, which we also worked on and did a lot of loans to that program. Those loans actually ended up being like 3 and 3/4s rate, whereas the counties have always been 1% fixed. So 1% fixed rate is very, very appealing. And now even more so, we're working on several loans right now because there's still funding available through that 2 and 3 grant to assist them with job retention. So the appeal of the program is that 1% fixed rate. And then we extend the term of the repayment schedule, so it's easier on the business to make the repayments.
Great. We've got this in place for a lot of our small business owners that are really struggling right now.
Yeah, the cycle is—it—it seems like we get through a disaster situation, and then another one comes along, and then there's a brief period where it stabilizes. And right now, again, because of the economy overall, we're having folks who are struggling once again with their cash flow, just not seeing the amount of discretionary income that customers have to buy things.
Supervisor Crandall has a question.
Yeah, if you can go back just one real quick. Yes, in regards to 80% of county median income, is it based off of gross net or adjusted gross income?
That's adjusted gross income.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
The microenterprise program is something that we started about a year or so ago. We made application for it. The state took quite a while to get the county the standard agreement so that we could get in play on it. And so it's a great program, and we operate it in cooperation with the Lake County Economic Development Corporation and the Small Business Development Center, so that we have referrals going back and forth. In some cases, the EDC can pick up and take folks to the next level. In some cases, it's better for us to work with it through the county's program. So the things that we are doing with that, to give the Board an idea of it, is business planning, financial forecasting. We spend a lot of time with that, just understanding cash flow, financial literacy, preparations to access for financing, which the workshop over in Lucerne is what they're talking about today. Marketing plan development, use of social media, QuickBooks. QuickBooks is a tool that we found quite a few businesses aren't familiar with, and once they get a handle on it and start using it, it's very helpful to them. And then credit building and credit repair. Those are things that we're doing. We have other folks in our shop who are specialists in those arenas. And then all these services are free to folks who are eligible for the program.
And that's through the last grant cycle that—
Yes. Yeah. These are the workshop locations that we've had. Just to give you folks an idea, we try to make sure that we're reaching throughout the county, and then the dates when they occurred, and then the topics that we covered. Today, the workshop is going on right now, and it's how to get a business loan. So we have the banks involved, loan officers with the banks, and then the Economic Development Corporation and the EDFC also participates in it to help folks understand how lenders look at their business when they are coming in and making application, and why they ask all those questions. It's—it's—we've had pretty good response with that so far. And then it's also good because then we can generate additional interaction and expand our relationships with other lenders in the area, so that we can then do companion loans for some of the folks that come in for the business loan. Like if the EDC has funding, and we have funding, and we can do 50% of one, 50 of the other, it works really well.
Great. How—oh, I was just going to ask. How well-attended are they? I think your next slide shows.
Yeah, that's—yeah, it shows that. So we've had—it—but we have about 45 RSVPs. We've kind of expanded our marketing of these things, and the county's very active in that. The information is posted on their website and so on, and then we work with the chambers and the EDC and others, and then the business organizations around the lake. So that actually—that number of 26 workshop attendees is actually low. It's probably about 32 have come to the workshops. The first one in Lower Lake, we had, I think it was about 16 people. Usually, you get between 7 to 15 folks coming, and maybe 50% of those you end up working with in the long term. Some of them, it's just maybe an hour or two. So we have, right now, that says 30 total enrollments that we're working long-term with folks. So that's the outcome. We use the workshops to make people aware of the services that are provided through the county, and then once you get them enrolled and make sure they're eligible, then you can start a longer-term relationship one-on-one with them. Thank you, Ben.
Sure. Ben wants to—
I can take over. So I already briefly touched on this, but—so there's up to 3.25 million per jurisdiction, but of that, only one activity can be over the counter. Had some initial discussions regarding public facilities. So with that, it has to tie to job creation or retention, since this is community development, block grant, economic development. It's a little different than a lot of CDBG programs. Talked to community development also about possibly utilizing that. So those discussions are ongoing. Hope to have something figured out somewhat soon, and then look forward to the NOFO being issued in January. So the facade improvements would be, just to reiterate a bit, in the economic development over-the-counter activities, so also with CDS's work with lending and technical assistance. So I've worked on a few different facade improvement programs. I think they're great, relatively low investment, to really kind of liven up a neighborhood. You can have that multiplier effect. The range we were thinking of was 5,000 to 40,000. And then it's kind of a wide range of use you can use. It's basically the outside appearance of the property, nothing with parking, but that's also kind of facing the right-of-way and is visible to the public. So geographic distribution, different facade improvement programs do this differently. Sometimes they concentrate, or there's been a lot of kind of capital improvements with roads, or if there's a specific neighborhood plan, or tied to other public expenditures. I thought with Lake County, because there's a decent amount of need and kind of the diffuse population, ideally, it would be split between supervisor district. But I think it's going to depend kind of on applicants, because they're going to have to front some of the money, and there's a specific timeframe to apply. And this is the first time we've done this, so we'll see what rolls in. And then this is aimed to support small business, so just kind of the technical definition we're using for small businesses, the Small Business Administration for the specific industry code, how they define that. So it is a grant, but it's public dollars, so some accountability metrics in there. 25% upfront once a plan submitted and approved, and then 75% once the entire project is completed. We are requesting just a little bit of skin in the game. We understand there's some Lake County businesses that don't have a lot of cash flow, but 5% seems pretty reasonable. And then a six-month timeframe to complete the project, so public dollars aren't going to projects that are dragging out forever. I've been told it could take several months for HCD to approve this, just how they've been with previous CBG rounds in the past. But I'm going to be working with an online intake form, and once we get the HCD money, we'll move as quick as possible. That's it.
Great. I'm opening up for questions from the Board right now, any? Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to at least breach the conversation that I had with CAO Parker, and I know that Mr. Rinkelmann has also had with others, because I was trying to figure out where does District 2 fit into this from a county perspective. From what I understand, we're looking at this across all jurisdictions within the county of Lake and not simply in the unincorporated.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make that statement public, and I think that accounts for both our cities and tribal to work with us and figure out how best to utilize these dollars.
Yes, and I'm also reaching out to the cities regarding a potential public facilities project.
That's awesome.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this presentation, and obviously you want to continue any momentum that we've already established through these various things. But going back to, I think, what was your eighth slide, and what the NOFA is going to do, my eyes immediately gravitated to public facilities and infrastructure and housing programs, not necessarily the things that you described later in the slide deck. So I just want to highlight that, because as we get closer to the NOFA and closer to you guys bringing something back, you know, obviously, I want to support what's been done, but 1.5 million for facade improvements may not be my first thing. And public facilities and infrastructure and housing are near and dear to my heart. So—and I know there's other buckets of money. We can address that stuff through continuum of care and other things. But if we haven't had opportunity to really dive down into CDBG and just really say, you know, what's the most bang for the buck? So small business assistance, QuickBooks, all that stuff, very important, but is a 1.5 million important, or are these other facilities' needs possibly something we should also be drilling down to in the NOFA process? So—and I know you're probably going to loop that stuff in as we go down that, but can you explain, as we get closer to the NOFA and as you're going to bring back recommendations, how we not only continue what the recommendations might be for small business support, but also CDBG gives us more than that in what we can ask for? So just from my own education, how do I start ranking these competing interests when we get closer to scope in the NOFA?
Yeah, sure. And also, I want to give our CAO Parker a chance to comment, too, but I don't know who wants to go first. Okay.
That's a very good comment. Right now, the state housing community development folks are—they've provided us with this information, which we tried to condense into something understandable from them. What they are trying to do is provide public facilities and infrastructure funds for projects that were not funded during a 2018, 2019 application cycle. They had a big batch of applicants come in. And so the way they've structured this is a little hinky from our perspective. Those funds, well, are being targeted towards those older projects that are what they call shovel-ready. So for us to compete, what I'm thinking we'll probably want to do as a jurisdiction to get at—if we've got some public facilities and infrastructure projects that are getting close to shovel-ready, being we have, you know, the—is the environmental work done or near being done by the time we need to apply? We'll probably—let's see, January, they'll let the NOFA January, February. By March or so, we're going to want to be ready with our application to submit. That would mean we'd have to have, for all these different activities, a clear idea what the budget's going to be, you know, engineering, design work, if it's a structure or if it's infrastructure improvements. We want to make sure that all those things are done and that we have a project that could be implemented within a year or two to meet their cycle. So those are things that we kind of wanted to talk about and get you—get everybody thinking about a little bit. And that's also for, you know, the business development programs. We want to—if the Board would decide to pursue the facade improvement, that would be one component in economic development, along with the business assistance activities. So you just want to make sure that you're ready to go and that you can answer all their questions and provide them with the documentation they need. That's kind of why we wanted to present today, to get you folks thinking about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think initially, just because of the—what the background that Jeff just—or Mr. Lucas just provided, but also we'll be reaching out to different department heads to see what they do have shovel-ready or, you know, shovel-ready as far as CEQA and permitting, because that will be a determining factor, especially on the competitive side, who will get the award. And we don't have—we don't have any outstanding old applications from 2019, so that already puts us kind of behind. So we were thinking initially to focus on the facade improvements and then explore other options with the different department heads, the ones that would be most competitive and eligible and most competitive and meet the income criteria, too.
How competitive are roads?
I can't speak to that, Mr. Lucas.
Can I speak to it?
Yes.
Yes.
So roads are not competitive at all, unfortunately. We've—we struggled and fought and—with HCD on this, especially after the fires, because the roads were beat up so bad after they came in and collected the leftovers, so to speak. So they won't do roads. And you know what we had to do for bridges, the language we had to use. So what they will do is, if there's a project, say a housing project, and you're going to provide 60 units for veterans, seniors, and the targeted income group folks, and you need—in the highways here, and you need a half a mile of roadway with utility hookups and sewer water, they will pay for that because that serves a specific project, and those people that are going to be residing there are within the national objective criteria. They—they fit the program. They won't—you know, just a road in a neighborhood, they won't do.
And that would include bus stops and any transportation or transit assistance?
Okay, Supervisor Spatier?
I don't know if it's HCD or HUD, but there is finally movement on roads when it comes to after-fire, because I know that's why the city of Clear Lake was able to do the 20 miles or 15 miles. From what I understand, it's difficult to deal with them, but they finally started allowing some of those projects to happen. So I just think we need to keep looking out for that. It might not be through the CDBG program itself. That might be a separate program, but they have started to reopen that since the 2017 fires.
Through the Disaster Relief Fund?
Yeah, something along those lines. Where before, we were asking FEMA and others to see if they can help us out, and they just said no, and finally, something—
That's good.
—got unclogged in the pipeline. At this moment in time—I'm going to put Mr. Rinkelmann on the hot seat a little bit. We hired Mr. Rinkelmann to provide economic development expertise. You're coming to us with this possibility of 1.5 million for facade improvements. I want to see what we do with it. I think that we've put you in this position to provide us opportunities to make positive change and enhance our tax revenue, and this has the potential to do so. And so I'm going to say, let's move forward. Let's continue the conversation, but I'm happy to move forward with what's presented today, because I think that it will help our businesses to be more attractive and to provide a different experience for those that are coming into Lake County. So I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Just one point of clarification. So the 1.5, the facade's part of it?
Yeah.
It's also the business loans and the technical advice. We didn't put specific figures kind of subcategory, because if we did that, went to HCD and said, like, we were going to do 500,000 in facade, and let's say, turns out, we actually—there's a strong demand for lending, or a much stronger demand for facade, we can't really go back to HCD, so this just preserves the flexibility.
Yeah, and we want to continue the programs we already had, because those run out of money as well, so—but no, in support of what's presented.
Supervisor Crandall?
So you're saying that public facilities and infrastructure, it would have had to be something that was applied for shovel-ready in 2019?
That's what they're providing—
Microphone.
Yes, that's what we're saying.
And do we know which ones were applied for then, or—
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry.
Do we know which facilities or infrastructure were applied for on our behalf?
There were none.
There were none? So basically, we can't really even do that one?
We would not be competitive—
Okay.
—this time around, this—and this NOFA.
Okay.
Yeah. See, that's why, you know, we're—we provide this information, but we wanted to take this time today to put it in context for you.
Okay. Now, I'm just making sure, because this is applied for two different activities, and that's just to have a backup?
Well, we wanted to start the conversation for public facilities, infrastructure, because the county hasn't used this particular source of funds in years for that purpose, and there may be good reasons for that, but want to take another look at it, because it is a good source of funds, and there is a need for it. Having said that, there are two activities that we could pursue. One would—one would be—and be competitive for and have a high likelihood of success would be the economic development components that we just talked about. And then for planning, you can apply—the county could apply for up to $250,000 for planning, strategy development, and that's—that could also take care of some of the NEPA and CEQA requirements, if there were any related to a specific project. For example, if you wanted to do a public facility project and you needed to do—put together a plan for that particular project on how to develop it, what the cost would be, you could use these funds for that. For example, City Point Arena is doing that for an improvement to current City Hall and the Veterans Hall, and it's also the Sheriff's Station and a bunch of other public benefit operations. The county hasn't done, to the best of my knowledge, an in-depth strategy development for housing. Where are housing units going to go? What kind of housing? What does the county want overall in the unincorporated area, and how does it fit with the cities for that? So that—this—that might be—
So that, this, that might be something that you would be eligible for and you would be competitive for. But it's up, up to you folks to decide what you want to do. These are just things that we, we consider we'd be eligible for.
I should have shared this with Jeff before. I just found out from Community Development. So I approached them for the housing analysis, and they have another over-the-counter source from HCD. So another HCD bucket. But I'm sure there's plenty of other planning needs, so going to explore that further.
I'd just like, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes, with Lisa's, you know, the retention of Lisa. I mean, we were at the Rural Housing Summit last week, and we, we've already started working on a scope of work to do a comprehensive countywide housing strategy and implementation plan, hopefully for the next 10 to 15 to 20 years, noting funding sources, timelines, synergy of projects, and assessment of what's available, what's not available, and looking at all. Nothing's off the table. New construction, rehab, rehabbing of hotels, motels. Nothing is off the counter. And that's what we, we'll probably get out of here in the next 20 days and put it out for bid.
Great.
Because I was just, this is just throwing it out there. And different public facilities that we have that are, that are very, you know, in bad condition, things like that. So I was thinking of that, not just, you know, our actual facilities, but also harbors, piers around the lake, things like that. Just thinking of other things, you know. But I understand the economic development for me is very important. So I'm, but I'm only throwing that out there because you're looking at things to possibly have prepared. So I'm just giving an idea of something I could think of.
Yeah, it's a good point. There can be some infrastructure tie-in, even if it's like a private harbor or some other piece of infrastructure that I think what they're mostly concerned with is the low and medium income. And then how does it tie to job creation? So if you can make those arguments, there's a decent chance.
Because I know with harbors and piers, at some, you know, point, there's an opportunity for commerce to, you know, work for boating and things like that, so.
Supervisor Spatier?
And I think that strategic planning on what is the plan for the next 10, 15 years for economic development will lead us to have the, just like we have now a 10-year plan for our roads, now we're working on engineering all of those projects so that they are right there on the shelf for us to pull off when funding becomes available. To me, that's the same vision that I have for economic development, that we know what the next step is. Therefore, we've already worked it out, and we're finding the funding to make sure we design those things, not just put a prospective idea on paper where it doesn't provide us the ability to capture some of these funds. And so I see that as a future capability. And at this moment, we just need to build with what we have and what we can. I feel momentum as far as where we'll be and what will be more available to us.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item or in the Zoom room? Not seeing any. Hands up. Oh, we do have one hand up. Betsy, want to unmute? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like to know if any of this money, any of these projects would be in, for preparation of emergency management facilities, temporary, temporary refuge areas. They're called, you know, locations for setting up pre-disaster storage of supplies in different communities under the National Disaster Recovery Framework and things like that. Actual, you know, supplies in those communities to help them survive and recover from fires.
I don't think HCD would find that permissible. So this is the specific economic development bucket of the CDBG program. So it's tied to kind of directly economic activity, job creation, job retention. There has been some hybrid projects. We've co-located kind of entrepreneurial space and emergency shelters. But how I read the regulations for this, for the economic development activities, it, it wouldn't connect.
Yeah, and we have also applied for other funding for community resilient centers for planning. And we're waiting to hear on that grant that we submitted, I think, in September. Okay, do we have any other public comment? Not seen anyone? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. And this was just a presentation, correct? Yep. Thank you for joining us today. It's always wonderful to hear from both of you. And
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more when the NOFA is released.